Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
I'd like to call the meeting order at 6:00 PM on December 4th, 2023 at the Town Hall upstairs. Welcome, everybody. Glad to see we have a pretty good audience today. Somebody want to take a moment to adopt the agenda as presented? And we'll make the change.
So.
And I will have a session? If not, all favor say aye. Opposed? We have the minutes of the regular meeting of November 20th, 2023. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Do you want to check?
Yeah.
On page three. Three quarters of the way down to the stat was Wilbur Stein's step on wastewater. I'm trying to make sure. What did it say? Says that the hurtite is will be reimbursed by the grant. And that is not going to be the attorney.
No, 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 I didn't know that answer.
Right. But now we do know it, so I don't know what correction. Hurtite will not be reimbursed.
Oh, it will not be. Yeah, that's what they told us last week.
Oh, no, yes.
I think at that time of the minutes is what.
We didn't know.
We didn't know. Yeah, so we need to correct.
That's how we asked next time.
I understand that it's different, but I think we don't actually.
Go ahead. I think he said it happened in meetings, so that's what the minutes goes. It started to happen in meetings, not to learn in the meantime.
So we leave it alone.
Yeah.
We didn't know at the time, but now we do. Are there any other, are there any other corrections to the minutes? As presented? If not, all favor say aye. Opposed?
Wait, can we have somebody move and say?
Well, I didn't.
A second, I thought. But. Not sure.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we have a factual order. Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Can you hear us?
Yes, perfect. Sorry, I had a little audio technical difficulty there for a second.
No problem. It always happens.
So yeah, thanks for having me here tonight to present the 2023 Annual Audit Report. I wanted to just take a few minutes, kind of go through the audit report, let you know what you're looking at. Kind of go through some of the things that I took some time today to kind of go through and make quick highlights of things I thought were interesting during the year. And then if there's anything at the end with questions, we can take them then. So yeah, looking at the audit report, you know, there's obviously a lot of information here. It's like a 40-page document. My job is all, is all kind of based on those four pages, one through four. That's the actual audit report itself. The rest of this is the financial statement of the town, which is, which is the responsibility of the town management accounting department throughout the year to deal with all the transactions, property taxes, other revenues, paying bills, paying payroll, all the transactions that happen through the year. My job is to come in and test those transactions, account balances, confirm debt balances, cash balances. And this audit report is the result of, this four pages is the result of that, that work. When you have an audit report, you can have qualified, unqualified, or inverse. The only qualification to the report for the, for the Town of Grafton was the same as what's been in the last few years related to the investments being carried at market rather than cost. And that, that is, again, one of those things that the standards for modified cash basis of accounting would require you to carry your investments at cost, not market. Although, as your auditor, I have to say, I would probably prefer them to be at market because markets are more accurate information, but the standards say cost, so I have to at least qualify the report for that. But other than that, that was the only qualification to the report. The rest of the, the rest of the funds that didn't have investments with them were all unqualified in the opinion. Kind of looking at page seven. This is the, the assets liabilities and fund balances, which some people would refer to as the balance sheet of the Town of Grafton for the major funds that for at 6:30, 23, listing your assets and liabilities. What it does is when we would take your assets minus your liabilities and you see the bottom section called the fund balances, which lists your fund balances restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. You can see that your total fund balance in the general fund is 749,112. The thing that I kind of pointed out is looking at the unassigned fund balance, which is 255,99, which is a good, healthy fund balance. And last year I noticed that when I looked at last year's report, that on a, that assigned or unassigned fund balance was a negative 744. So there was obviously a buildup of the unassigned fund balance during the year. And again, all the other funds here, the major funds, ARPA, Library, Capital Projects, shows you the balance sheet for those individual funds as well. And if you look at the next page, page eight, this is basically the income statement, consolidated income statement of what happened in all the funds from revenues to expenses for the year. And as you can see, the big, looking at down the general fund, third line from the bottom, you see net changes and fund balances. That's the increase in your total fund balances for the year. And you'll see that was 416,233. And as, you know, when I was looking through the numbers earlier, it was pretty clear that a lot of that was related to some FEMA revenues that came in during this year for what I think were probably expenses in prior years. Looking at the other funds again, we got the Capital Projects, ARPA, Library, all showing the activity for here as well as the trustee of public funds. Kind of looking at pages nine through six, nine through 15, this is your budget actual. You've probably seen a lot of these throughout the year during your financial presentations from the treasurer. This is just an actual, an actual looking at the budget and actual for the whole year and how the year ended up. Again, the thing that struck out to me is looking at page one of seven, you see the FEMA revenues coming in at 476,005,28 above budget, which if you look at the rest of the numbers on page 11, you'll see a sewage study that was done for about 27,700 of expense. When you look at those two numbers, that pretty much makes up the, the increase in the fund balance for the year. You know, a lot of the other, other were over and under here or there, but nothing, nothing significant that I wanted to point out. If you're looking at pages 18 to 35, these are what we call the notes to the financial statements. If you're looking to do a deep dive on any of the items related to cash, what's insured, what's uninsured, fund balances, what's this committed for, what's this reserved for? Looking at all the different notes and debt balances and interest rates. If you're looking for more information on, on that kind of stuff, this is a great place to go to get some, a deep dive into a lot of the balance sheet accounts and a lot of the fund balances. And so if you're looking for that, that information is there and available. Looking at pages 36 and 37, again, this is your balance sheet and income statement related to your, to your private purpose trust funds and all the different funds for that and kind of taking it fund by fund. And then the final two pages of the report, 38 and 39, that's the internal control letter. As part of a review of the audit procedures that we do, if we find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that, that we find during the audit, we, we have to report those into the report. And as you can see, there was no letter of significant deficiencies and material weaknesses, so there were none noted. We did issue a management letter with a couple of things we mentioned about possibly doing a fraud risk assessment. And, and also again, because we had a qualification report, we always have to mention the investments, carrying them at cost rather than market. But like I said, I've got to put that in the recommendation, but I'm, I'm not sure it's any advantage to the town to do that other than removing the qualification. Because I still feel it's, it's a pretty, it's pretty good to have those numbers in market. It gives you much more usable information in my mind, but obviously not in the standards. Other required communications that I have for the, for this meeting. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management. We had no disagreements with management. There were no consultations with other accountants or auditors. And all entries that we, that we suggested were all posted, so there was no unposted entries for the financial statements. So overall, again, another successful audit for the Town of Grafton. I talked to my partner Chad and my manager Jenna kind of went through the, they did a lot of the field work on it. And they thought it went very smoothly and wanted me to mention appreciated to all the staff for helping them out during the course of the audit. Does anybody have any questions?
I guess there are no questions.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
I hope you have a great night.
Yeah. The listeners. You're on.
Where are you?
Right here.
Every year we have to come before you at the last December meeting to file any errors and admissions that we found during the year in the filing of our grant list and the running of the taxes. There was one error this year, which was inadvertently caused by when we turned over our CESP Pro into a memory tax base. One, one entity, the Grafton Historical Society, was deemed to be taxable. That's not taxable, so we had to correct that. And that was worth 5,478.64. That was taken away from revenue, which it never should have been there in the first place. So the listeners have signed this. We recommend that you approve it with a motion. And that you need to sign it on the back and they'll give this to Morgan. And you can take care of it. Are there any questions? That is the only error that we found.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept this as subject.
I would, I would make a motion to accept it, and then you just sign it. It goes to Kim, and Kim has to record it and attach it to the grant.
Okay, so somebody make a motion to accept the error, admission of the report. Some. Any discussion? Any questions? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's give us a minute here when we have this thing signed. Okay, who is here to talk about the DOR and some grant?
That's me.
Yes.
I am Megan Collins. I am here representing the Grafton Outdoor Alliance. Are you all familiar with that group? Basically, it's pretty much anybody who is dependent on tourism for either outdoor recreation or education, also the businesses here. Earlier this year, the group got together, really trying to see basically how the town can improve the visitor experience when we have people coming to Grafton, as well as the experience that residents have. They're looking at how to improve the flow and the connectivity of the experiences that exist here and also how to, basically what they say is increase hang time. How can we get visitors that are coming for like an hour program somewhere to extend their stay? And to have sort of a menu of opportunities for them when they come here, either to go hiking or skiing or to a program at the, at the museum, or whether they are coming here to Village Park. So I am working part-time for the Wyndham Foundation and started attending these meetings. And I came across this grant that's being authored by the state. And basically, it is an opportunity for groups or municipalities to apply for funding for different opportunities. It can be for actual implementation of projects if you're shovel-ready. It can be for project development. They're also looking at expanding access. And then this year, they put in a new one for flood recovery. So the Grafton Outdoor Alliance would like to apply for the project development, basically planning. It gives us an opportunity to create basically a master plan for outdoor recreation and education here in town. The Wyndham Foundation has graciously agreed to be the lead. You need an entity that is capable of managing the grant. As you all know, a lot of these state grants are based on reimbursement. So the Wyndham Foundation would be responsible for paying out invoices from consultants, because this would allow us to hire an outdoor recreation consultant. Also for any staff time that needs to be recovered. So Morgan has been at the meetings representing the town. And also Margot Matt has been representing Village Park. So if there were activities that went on during this planning process, Morgan's time with the consultant, something like that, those could be reimbursed as long as we include them in the budget. The grant proposal is due December 15. I basically have pulled together a draft proposal. What we're missing is a proposal and scope of work from a consultant. We've been calling and meeting with, we meaning myself and Nick has been involved. And Owen, who is the manager of the Grafton Trails. So we've been talking to some outdoor recreation specialists in the area. And so we're still waiting for a proposal from them. So what we're asking for is basically support from the select board. We'd like if the select board would provide a letter of support for the proposal. Again, once I get the scope of work and we're able to put together a work plan, I think I can sit down with Morgan and really see where there might be times that she would have to be working with the consultant or we had just to organize volunteers to go through Village Park. Basically, what they would be doing is coming and doing an assessment of what we have, seeing where there's opportunities for connectivity. As you all know, we have just so many different resources that a lot of people don't know where they can go or how to get from one place to another. We have new opportunities like Birchdale Camp now, people who are interested in getting out to the the Sowstone quarries, as well as our, just our opportunities here in town and trying to restore that village trail that, that the Wyndham Foundation put in and really there's, it lacks signage. And we lack visitor services, like a central visitor center where people can find restrooms, where we could put or where we might need to think about parking. And again, this is all just planning. None of this is anything that we have to act on. But it will set us up for being able to submit an application for implementation. And if we got this project development grant, then, and decided to apply for some projects, it makes us that much more competitive. So are there any questions?
No questions.
Yes.
You have minimum amount 20,000, maximum none. So what are you proposing to this grant?
Well, so a lot of that will depend on what the consultant, that will be our biggest expense. The other expenses will again be staff time, my time for managing the grant, anything that we use, materials there are included. I'm happy to share a draft of the proposal with anybody who's interested. I have, I have been planning on sending it out to the steering committee of the GOA on Wednesday, whether I have the proposals from the couple of consulting groups that we've contacted or not. But so, yeah, the minimum you can ask for is, is 20,000. There's no maximum. And that's just for, I only put the requirements down for the project development, because that's the only, that's, that's the track that we're applying there.
Tim, Balthazar?
You know, the consultants have said that anything from 50 to 75,000 would be theirs. We're trying to do ours would be basically a year so that we could be applying for implementation this time in 2025. It depends too on what the group wants to take responsibility for. I think a lot of the community engagement could be done by our groups. I mean, everybody is so well-established, you know, they're, they're part of the town. There isn't anything that we see now for implementation that would be really super controversial anyway. But we do an input from residents and community members, you know, what kinds of obstacles have they seen and, you know, what would they like in terms of additional signage and resources and services and that kind of thing. So a lot of these more expensive proposals have a whole community engagement plans or where you're having focus groups and, you know, lots of meetings where I think this could be some very strategic opportunities for people to weigh in. And again, it's, it's all just a planning process now, so there's lots of opportunity for people to, to give feedback on it.
I guess, I hope in your planning that you would also not overlook the schools, especially our school here in Grafton, we're trying to promote the school through, you know, the nice things they're doing there for kids.
Outdoor education, yeah. Yeah.
And also with the will stay here, when people come in, they want a home, they want to help the schools if they're going to be a resident here. So that's the key, if you could tie all that in.
That I think will be fleshed out. So what we have put in the, and again, this is a draft, is that we're wanting to make sure that we are facilitating use by schools and the opportunities that outdoor recreation and education provide. Our school as well as, you know, the William Gray and the schools in, in Bellows Falls also underserved groups now and including looking at what are some of the challenges that our seniors here in town have getting from one place to another. And again, sort of that, that will be a really great opportunity to have just a big assessment and eventually a proposed master plan with implementation compliments.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody want to make a motion so that we can, if you'd like to, to send a letter of support to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Any other second on that or any other questions? I don't see, I don't see. I think it's great.
Thank you very much.
All favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Yes. All right, so Morgan, I guess, I don't know, you know what.
Yeah, well, I'll be in touch and I can provide some suggested.
Language or something.
And again, especially after we get that scope of work, then we know exactly.
Well, certainly, I think we're bored, bored here and support that, so it shouldn't be a mission.
Great.
Okay. Thank you for coming. The next item is, there's a letter that was drafted that is to go to all the town, all the houses and people who are in the so-called Fire District. What we need to do now is to get an approval to send a letter out to the district. And we have scheduled, we want to schedule a meeting on January 15th with the attorney, Steve Ankuda. And that'll be a public meeting prior to a select board meeting. We don't know where it's going to be yet, but depending on the size. And to answer any questions, to understand what the whole fire district, how it gets set up, whatever it is, along with the letter, which explains, tries to explain it, will be a map showing the actual district and each house it's in. So all we're looking for is approval to send this letter out to the residents in that district. Yes, Wendy?
Can we ask some questions about?
Sure.
Okay. Backing up a little bit, what's the deadline for the grants that we will approve? The last name? So then I'm my second follow-up. I don't want to monopolize the question, but I think there'll be more. What's the hurry on doing this if they're, my understanding, we talked about it in the meeting, I watched the meeting, is that we got to do this like right now. What's the hurry to do it now if the deadline is not for?
There's no hurry, it's just that if the, the Fire District has to get organized. There has to be some leaders who are going to shepherd this thing going through. So if you don't get started to see, if you have people who want to do it, I don't know exactly when the 90% will come, but I would expect probably set with the next two or three months.
Yes, I told Morgan and I last week that, like, January.
Yeah. So once, so once that 90% comes, then, you know, things start to, so the reason to get started is so that everybody understands. And it's going to take some organization. Because remember, the town, the select board, the town does not, we don't participate in that.
So the way you're talking about it now, it sounds like you think it won't happen.
No, it won't happen.
There, there is no will among the.
I don't know if there is. That's why we're having a meeting.
Right now, there is not. So are you trying to fast, fast track this just so you know that and then you can proceed in a different way? Because that, I can understand that.
Well, if you don't have, according, say I'm wrong, Seth, but if you can't get 25 people
Yeah, 20.
For 20 people to sign the Fire District, then nothing happens.
Okay.
But we have to get started with the process.
Before the 90%, before knowing how much it's going to cost. That's the other.
Well, you, you, what you're doing is you're not committing yourself to anything. You're just doing an organization meeting.
Once you're committed to making a fire district, it's really hard to untangle that.
No, 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 no. What, what the board had, what, what we hoped it would happen is that there'd be enough leaders in the town, okay, who would want to participate in this thing. The Fire District has to be, has to be created first before anything can be done. And once, once it's done, if, if you, if the Fire District is approved, only the district is approved. And then if there's nobody who wants to form it, it goes away. It, it just, if you don't have a Fire District, you don't have a wastewater system. It, it ju- it just, there's, if you don't have a fire district, you don't have a wastewater system. But there's, there's consequences. And so I think, I think what you have to do is see where, where the interest is. If there's any interest for people to begin to have a meeting. Uh, and, and get a leader, we get a president, get a whatever who's going to shepherd this thing in. In the event that it, it moves forward. And, and only what we're trying to do is to get a public aware. And the attorney to answer any questions and that that takes place.
When you're right, though, if, if there is, I mean, once that ninety percent plan is there. Up until the grant expires, then if people step forward and want to form a fire district, they can. I think the whole point of this is more informational, like here's how you do it. If you have any, because there's a lot of culture about what is this fire district, how do you do it? Yeah, and that's what, that's what it's for. I mean, it's all just provide information to you guys. Not trying to pursue an agenda or anything, it's just trying to provide information to you guys.
Yeah, so, so the timeline is really um mysterious. Because I would think that, that the ninety percent meeting would have to take place first. So the townspeople have the maximum amount of information on which they can then proceed and ask relevant questions. So, I, I don't understand why you want to have an informational meeting about the fire district before we have the ninety percent.
The townspeople, it, it doesn't, the townspeople have no say. It's the fire district that says.
Well, well, the fire district, as far as I understand, consists of um voters who live in the designated eighty-four parcel area. So those are the people I'm talking about.
Right.
I'm not talking about myself or others who are outside, but for those people. Wouldn't those people need the information from the ninety percent meeting first? Before they can start intelligently thinking about the fire district?
Well, not, I would say not necessarily, because all this is telling you is, here's what is entailed in a fire district, so you know that. You get the ninety percent, if that happens, you have that meeting before, then you get ninety-six, so well, we know how to, we know the information on how you do a formative fire district. Do we want to get through with that or not? If you don't, you don't.
And, and then the other question, this is just an even one to answer. Is it twenty voters or twenty households? Or the majority of the eligible voters who decide?
What I'd like, Lisa, see, we don't have all the information and that's the reason to have the meeting on the fifteenth if the board approves. So that we have the attorney and the experts here who can answer all the questions. Exactly who, when, where, and how. We don't have all that knowledge. It's very complicated.
Twenty registered voters.
Steve, Steve Ankuda.
Twenty individuals who are registered voters.
Twenty registered voters in the, in the district.
No, yeah, but if they're, yes, yeah.
How many vote in?
We'll find out.
Forty-seven, something, yeah.
Was created by who? By Ty and Bond?
No. Well, the map, the map came out, um, just so I can display you. When, uh, when we applied for the designation of a village center and it was approved. They took the village center. But then they had to adjust that because there were some regulations for the grant. That the money could only be used in certain parts of the village or whatever. So it, as far as I understand, it was a combination of taking the village center and whatever the requirements are for the grant. And that's how the, that's how that was created.
But that, you know, the, the lines of that map could be generally managed to change the book.
No, that, that those lines.
Have you added pieces of property that were in favor of?
You can't, you can't either.
You can, before that map was drawn.
No, it's drawn, it's done. That's it.
Who, who defined that? I mean, when did that happen? So we were also, all these property areas were included in the district without their consent?
Is it, I think it's what Joe said, I wasn't there when it happened, I think it was that village center designation. And then it was, and I don't know why, but I wasn't around at that point.
There was some requirement, Seth, about um.
But that's about the village district and not about the fires. So if you just happen to use the village district map to recreate fires.
We, we did it, we did it.
No.
Who did? I believe Ty and Bond.
And the state. And, and the state, and the state.
Ty and Bond created that district without really calling the people who were in the district.
No, I mean, I, I don't think it's true. I don't think Ty and Bond created the sta- the district. I think the, the state created the district because of the regulations.
Well, I think we ought to know who created this.
We can get these answers to these questions, but.
I remember conversations with the planning commission.
I think so, I think so. This is an issue on the plan, I think there was initially a wastewater group, wasn't there, Joe?
The wastewater group used the septic pumping district, that's our first. And then we narrowed that down to the seventy-two properties that are right in the village that have overlapping leak trails. This map and the map we talked about in the water mission are.
Okay, I didn't know.
They have some of the same properties, obviously, especially the ones that are impacted by the overlapping leak trails. But the eighty-four properties that are in this map are something that Ty and Bond and the representatives from the state, I believe, came up with.
That's what I believe.
And, and these boundaries, if you look at them, I don't know about the voting boundaries, I think Patrick has an excellent question. These are the property, these, these lines are those properties that could have been served by either the village park site or the Alpine Meadow site or the Hall and Mills site. Because some of these properties don't have a, their, their well is a decent distance from the septic. They don't really need, if you will, a gray water system like this, that are the properties in the village.
But I, I, all these questions can get answered in January. When we have, when we have the attorney and we can have anybody from Ty and Bond or whatever there.
Um, so and then also at the last meeting, I think Seth, we talked about what other possible projects this grant could cover. Because they widen the frontieria for these grants. What are some of the other ones? Could you remind me?
Well, one thing is the point of entry systems at the Halvus or the PFAS. Other than that, I'm not really certain after talking to the people from the state last week. If we asked them about these alternative designs that I was, was I, we asked, Morgan asked them all these questions. We asked about these alternative designs that the, the planning commissioners were working on. And they said clearly that the grant would not cover those alternative designs. One alternative design is the living machine, which is basically like a big greenhouse. Uh, they said that the grant would not cover that.
But it would cover well water filtration system in the village.
Possibly.
Because I then would ask this question, what are the infrastructure issues facing the town? I would say, people who can't drink their water, who live right in town for months and months now, that's a big issue. This, what you're proposing would not solve that problem. We have things like cow rotages, I know the grant won't cover that, but these are the things that we don't talk about ever. Doesn't, doesn't get talked about in serious, in serious fact. We have a big bridge project coming. There's so many big things happening that this feels like, and I'm going to be really honest about something too. You have a board member who will benefit from this wastewater project and I'm uncomfortable with, I know you never made a decision yet. But it's really, um, I think it's inappropriate for, for that person to be discussing, proposing, whatever. Um, and also, I would say down the line, if there is some sort of a legal thing that happens. Um, say we in this fire district, you can get the representation and then look back at how this all played out. Um, I, I just, these are some of my concerns, so.
You'll, there will be more than just one option presented at the ninety percent report, you see that?
That's true.
This is good, this is good for now, if the board reform a fire district, we cannot get out of that. We can't get out.
I, I, the fire, I mean, I wouldn't think the fire issue would be formed until, obviously, after you get the ninety percent report. The point of the attorney can just answer questions, you have questions like, what is the fire district? We only know so much. Certainly give you, you know, it's a question and answer type.
Would you understand that when you say these things in a meeting, and I write about them in the draft in the news, it causes a panic in town? And it's Christmas time, I'm sorry, it's the holiday season and you whether you celebrate or not. And then you say, we're changing lawyers and this is happening, boom, 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 everything seems like it's being sped up for some reason. And you, you just said you don't think it's going to be hot, um, formed until after the ninety percent meeting, that's huge.
Well, it could be. I mean, I, you guys would have to want to do it. And why would you want to form a fire, fire district? For a plan you don't know what it is.
Exactly, that's a good. So, so it's really putting the cart before the horse. You have this fire district. All those questions asked before the council people who would be living in it have had the information that they need to even think about, do we even want this or not? So it is putting the cart before the horse.
But don't see the harm in having a meeting.
What's the harm about, what's the?
When, when it's, so that, so that when, when it is, it comes apart, it, it had to go forward with it. You'll know that, you'll know all the information of what it is and how it's developed and, and, and because there's a lot of questions, which I would think that the homeowners would like to know.
Right, but as, as, as Seth just agreed, we will be getting the information about that the actual project would, would be at the ninety percent meeting.
That's right.
Not at this attorney meeting.
No, but that will give you an opportunity to ask questions about a fire district, that's about.
But it does sound like you're endorsing the formation of fire district of over ninety percent. But saying, giving all the information, because maybe we get twenty people who through this petition will form a fire district. It sounds like that's what's being recommended. I know you're not.
No, that is definitely.
There are other people.
When I heard Wendy say just now that one of the people on this board would profit singularly for this, I don't know, but why hasn't that person refused?
First of all, I, I'm not profiting by it, okay, because they're going to take my land and use it and it's going to reduce my land. I'm not, okay, secondly, I haven't made a decision because I don't know all the facts and figures of how they want to install this apparatus that's going to, and if I don't like it, then I'm not, I'm not going to have them do it.
It sounds like negotiation, man.
So.
And you can't, that's not negotiation, I, I thought that was.
I don't, I don't live on negotiating.
Okay.
Is a hundred thousand dollar line moving in the budget for land acquisition?
They're not, I, 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 you, you already got my land sold, believe me. I'm not interested in selling my land. The only reason why I did this is because this was, it wasn't the site that they looked at and I let them take, take a, uh, samples and do test pits to see whether it was a viable site. I'm not sure that I want to do it. And I have, they, I have, they have a series of questions about it, which they have not addressed my, my concerns yet.
But just following up with Francis's question, when Suzanne was on the board and the Alpine Meadow was being discussed, she had to refuse herself in one discussion. Why have you not had to do that job?
Well, I'm sure that I can, I, I, I'm not voting. I'm just running the meeting, I'm not voting.
Weren't voting on the Alpine Meadow either. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just asking questions as they say I'm boxing.
And I'm, I'm not sure about this protocol of this, but when it's, when it's a subject. And excuse me, I didn't know it's you, but when it's a subject that really does appear to have your self-interest in mind. I just wonder why the protocol isn't that the, somebody else on the board shares that part of the meeting to kind of protect you from.
I'm at, I'm at.
Situation.
I'm at every, what, Morgan and I are at the wastewater meeting. Sometimes Joe's there.
Be.
But when we meet, no, no, what I'm talking about is when we meet, the people from the state, we meet with them every other week.
Yeah.
Morgan and I are there every time, almost. Joe's there sometimes, he's not there every time. Um, but he's, Joe's never, just everyone knows, Joe's never alone discussing this with the people from the state.
No, I'm worried about him talking to us tonight. I'm wondering if it's not you giving the information instead of.
Hey, no problem. I don't have a problem.
I'm happy, I have been giving, I've been giving a lot of information after talking, I'm happy to do it.
And it can go the other way. It could be not to your benefit, it could be to your benefit. I mean, it's, it's, that's my, it's about the open meeting law. It's not about the meeting, it's about the state, that's my.
I, I, that's the issue, I'm happy to take these questions and bring the discussion on, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, you would keep it a lighter, honestly.
And I'm happy to talk to anybody about it, I'm willing to.
So if we went ahead with this meeting and it, the twenty people or whatever it is had no appetite for it. This whole thing is done at that point, is that right?
A lot of that point is the grant's still there till twenty twenty-six. So at some point, after they get the ninety percent, at some point during that time period. Twenty people in the town say, this actually looks like a good idea to me, and they want to form a fire district, they can form it, but they can't.
I guess if you went ahead with a meeting, it would kind of be almost like taking the straw poll to see what the appetite actually is for this project.
I, I guess the way I'm, I'm envisioning it is, it's an opportunity for people to ask questions. Is that every meeting we've had about this, and people ask me questions about a fire district, I, I am an attorney, but I'm a persuasive attorney. If you get in a car crash, I can help. I don't know much about fire districts in the state of Vermont. So, I, I envision this as a question, answer session, so people can ask questions when somebody is informed about this. Like, what is this fire district? What does it entail? What would, you know, what, what's going to take away from me? What would it, how would it benefit me? Things like, that's the way I'm looking at it, not, now you got to sign on the dotted, and if there was any impression that now you got to sign on the dotted, that I'm going to form a fire district. That's not the way I'm looking at it, just, and I'll prove it, people ask questions, but someone, to someone who knows as authority on this and knows about it. I mean, that's the line I'm looking at, it's just a really a question answer session with the person who knows about fire issues.
So the spark of the meeting, it, was it for a poll, by the votes or not?
No, no, just to, just so they can have.
So this is just informational.
That's what I, that's what I thought it would be. That's what I envisioned it.
Go ahead, Seth.
So I think that the concerns of the people who live in this area have been so well voiced already. But I do have um a question that causes us to step back. Because what I think I'm hearing is that regardless of the timing, whether we decide to form a fire district now or after the ninety percent meeting. And by the way, I think we need to have the information before we talk about it. But what I'm not clear about is how the idea of a fire district came up to the select board in the first place. And why is it that now, what we're hearing is that if we have the ninety percent meeting and then we decide not to form a fire district, that the project is dead? How did that come to be?
And see, this is a good question, you can ask Steve. He can answer it with more authority than I can, the attorney.
But you as a select board, Rich, John, Joe, Kathy, Seth, came to us with this letter. Proposing that we consider and go to a meeting, a public meeting about answering our questions about the fire district. And you in a public meeting are saying that if we don't form the fire district, the project is dead. A project we've been working on in this community for almost twenty years. We have a once in a lifetime opportunity for a four million dollar grant. That the votes of forty people who live in a particular area are going to be a thumbs up, thumbs down on that project. This is new information to me, that a necessary step in this process was the formation of a fire district.
It was news to us when we learned that, too.
Who did you learn about?
From this people from the state of Vermont. You have to form a fire district, the fire district.
And Ty and Bond didn't know this?
Did, and, and who it was. I may, I just, I just want to, and I'll get back to the others who the questions are so good. I checked with the Secretary of State today and I said. I checked with the Secretary of State today and I said, where is there a requirement that we form a fire district in order to have a wastewater system in town? What Jenny Prosser told me is that there's no no such requirement. And that if there is any requirement at all, it might be from the Agency of Natural Resources. If the Agency of Natural Resources has a requirement for us to have a fire district, we should have something in our hands that says that.
The only.
And our select board who's putting this in front of us should have deep knowledge of why that's happened.
The only thing I can say is that when Seth and I met with Steve and Kuda about um because they encouraged us to, the state encouraged about the fire district. He had the um Title nineteen, I think it was Title nineteen, as it said. And it's in the it's it's in regulations in the in the state that you have to do this. We were we were dumbfounded.
The select board should take an action item for all of us in this community. And provide to us the rationale for having to form a a fire district or wastewater district in order to uh go forward with this project. In the very words of this letter, it says to proceed beyond a plan and implement a wastewater system. They it needs, the wastewater district needs to be created. You had to have some authority from somewhere to put that sentence into this letter.
That's the law. That's that's the it's the legal advice we were given.
Okay, so I think that's what we need to see. Because this has changed the entire dynamic of this project. It is known to us that there are people who live in an area who take the initiative themselves in full knowledge. They don't have to implement finance and maintain a wastewater system. That they take that upon themselves and say, we'd like to form a fire district select board. That's what we're here to do. This is new information to us, isn't it?
It's huge and.
And and we rely, you are our representative government. We have to rely on you.
I I I understand this is new information.
Until we have that.
I understand.
I'm on hold.
I I understand this is new information, but honestly, it's something that should have been done from the beginning. That you had to have a fire district and why I came in late on. Should have been, I wasn't there when they did all these studies a long time ago. Somebody should have known that, that you have to form a fire district. They didn't know and.
Why wouldn't the general counsel for the Secretary of State's office not know that?
The legal.
And the expectation would be for us as normal citizens to know.
No, I'm saying for the people that were initially on the committee that studied all this.
The people on the committee had advice from state government and from uh and we did not know about this. We were asked to turn the project completely over. And that happened.
That is.
If we were missing not knowing that, then the new committee had a chance all over again, Seth, to find this information out before now. Or even now.
We were given legal advice by V L C T, by Steve and Kuda, and from the people in the state we meet with that it has to be a fire district form.
I trust you. I trust you. But do we have as citizens who will be greatly impacted by such a such a district? Do we have the skill set in our forty people in our eighty four properties?
And our media.
To finance, maintain and implement a wastewater system. I mean, I look, I of all people admire the expertise that you bring to this board, Seth. But at some level, it's got to be shared with us. We do not know the legal foundation for having to take this important step. I think that's the very, very next step. And I think this whole letter and whole project are on.
Well, and that is what Steve and Kuda, who is the attorney, who can answer these questions and give you a better answer than I can on that.
That's why we set the meeting up. Want to say that.
The letter is. How can we send a letter to eighty four property owners with a select board ourselves saying that you'll get the answer to these questions? Who wrote this letter?
Uh, it was a combination of the board, committee, and Steve and Kuda.
And then Steve and Kuda wasn't earlier trying to meet or tonight?
No, he was ever here tonight.
You're hoping he could be here tonight.
What what is his relationship to the town?
We're we're hoping he will be the town attorney. As of right now, he does abolition.
Right now, he's the attorney for the wastewater committee. And that he he gets paid by the grant.
I respectfully request that, I think that Lisa has put it very well. The cart is before the horse here. Uh, this is not an initiative by citizens in this district. This is something that feels like new information. And we can't go forward right now until we know the legal reason for the formation of such a district. Because if it's really true, a thumbs up, thumbs down in the hands of these people who then would have to agree to accept the weighty responsibility of implementing, financing, and maintaining a wastewater system. This takes a skill set. This takes an infrastructure. It takes citizens.
These are all true statements. I mean, these are all true statements, but I think that's why we need to speak with and have questions and answers. Uh, questions asked and answers given to you by someone who's an authority in this area.
So what you're saying is we need the answers to those questions at the meeting. And I'm saying to you, please, as our as our representative government, give us a factual reason for being at the meeting.
Fire fire districts are formed when there are services, for example, a wastewater system that's not available. Residents all over the town, they're they're available, this service is available all year resident within their designated district. And those instances, fire districts are formed to manage that system. Happens all over the state of Vermont. That's very strong.
Are they required to be formed or are they?
That is what we have been told by the people from the state and from Steve and Kuda.
When you say the people from the state, are you referring to the net?
Yes.
Representatives in the Agency of Natural Resources.
Yeah, that's who we meet with.
So I I guess I don't, maybe I'm gonna stop. I guess I don't understand why the idea of providing to this community of voters uh or to the entire town the legal foundation for the requirement to set up a wastewater district in order to use the four million dollar grant that this town has been given. It's in this.
I I I don't know. To solve a problem doesn't exist. That's the other.
I I will say this to them that um and I said this to Steph and I said it to Morgan. Um, this should have come out right at the beginning. Uh, from either Taiwan or from the state. And we've met with many, many individuals of the state. This only came out um recently, within the last three or four weeks about this fire district thing. And I think it was mishandled by both the engineer and by the state, quite frankly. Uh, because I, this is something that I don't think anybody ever thought that there was gonna be just a group of people who are going to either vote for it or run it. But that's what the law says. And I'm not a attorney, but he Steve and Kuda at a meeting that Seth and I had with them, he read it off and he said, this is this is what you have to do. That's all I can say.
And what's with the select board? Wait, did you bring that up to the select board, Rich? Why did you think that?
When I was reading all through the emails, I took out of it, this is the mechanism, how this moves forward. More than they were trying to hide something from us. It was kinda again, this is how, this is the mechanism that you need to do before. And at the sixty percent meeting, the person that was there for that, they did come out and vote. The people that, the only people that are gonna be affected by this are the people in that district. Uh, so by extension of that, maybe he was kinda how long at that point there was gonna be a fire district? So is it like an unsaid?
Have them vote.
Let's see.
So I mean, is it, are they trying to hide something from us or is it just, this is how it's done? You should know that. I'm 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 not sure.
This is the third, this is the third time we've been in this little town and never done before. And it would have been true all those times. Nothing changed. So I mean, the tie and bond did it before with us. I mean, it's I think we waited for ninety percent and then we do it. No, I heard.
With my understanding of reading all this, so if there isn't a fire district formed, then the project is dead. From what I read of all emails that I I have, that's right.
Because it is. If the fire district is not formed, then the project is dead.
That's what I get from the emails that I've read.
And then we can move forward with the filtration system. So people think they're in control. Really the problem in town.
And that is a possibility, yes.
I would put that she go forward with this portion and answer that whoever comes to speak with us, there must be other towns that have wrestled with this.
Yeah, he did an answer he does. He he made.
One would like, with several other examples of how they worked, if it didn't work with it. Who voted up down? So and he should come, not he, they should come prepare with more than just one or two. They should add.
Uh, well, Joe, I asked him a lot of questions about that, actually. Um, and he was heavily involved in uh Westminister joining up with Phyllis Paul. He was heavily involved with that, with all the issues that went along.
Well, he's also, one that there is going through the same practice we are for our septic system. And they had a meeting there about three or four weeks ago and he was he was there presenting the the law. Um, I read that in one of the blogs there.
So he knows how happy Westminster is about their fire moves.
Oh, they know the issue.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, he knows the issues.
Well, he knows. Okay.
That's what he was talking to us about, the issues. Yeah.
The other thing about this letter, we're not, how are we nearing the end of the planning phase of a potential system? We really are nearing the end of it?
Yeah, the ninety percent phase is the end.
That's the end. Okay.
Yeah.
We don't have a report, a written report for the sixty percent. And we also don't know if the filtration system, which is an immediate need in our community. It's not a future risk. It's an immediate need. Is it gonna be included in the ninety percent that's going to be?
Don, you have any handle?
Yeah, how does a petition to get the twenty signatures begin and what's the timeline for it?
I don't know.
Okay, so what happens if there's a petition of, what did you say? There were forty five voters? So if twenty five people tell you not to do it, then does that stop the process?
For our purposes, right?
I I I would, I would, I would like, I would like that.
Negative petition.
I would hope that we during to have this meeting on the fifteenth so that all these questions can be asked to an expert who knows all about this. Rather than us sitting here trying to tell you bits and pieces that we are having a tough time actually grafting ourselves.
Just as a point, you read the statute last time we met that that
that's how the state set up the law.
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, law law.
Right?
It's a state law.
It's just.
Who can vote for it?
Well, I think.
I'm sure you keep talking about the state law. If you could give us, or if you can get someone to give us it, you know, quick, the statutory authority or the regulatory authority of fire district. A lot of this people with.
Okay.
That is, you can, if there is a, I think we're gonna put on the website how to form with fire district, a step by step guide to help a community get organized.
How would that escape?
And that in there, I was about to answer your question. That in there has the statute, Title twenty, chapter one seventy one. So but if you look through that, it's a very informative discussion about fire districts. Um, and it will tell you all about.
So what is the statute? And can you send it out to the distribution list that Morgan has?
Yeah, it's all, again, it's on the town website, the document.
I've I've looked at that document. The document is largely about all of the infrastructure requirements that are necessary.
Starts off by what is a fire district? Things to consider in the formation. And that's Title twenty, the statute is Title twenty, chapter one seventy.
But it doesn't say why. That's the thing. It doesn't say why. It was all about.
Your experience reading that statute, did it come across as?
It's unclear. Like many statutes.
Must.
I will say this, lawyers write things so people can't understand them, right?
Well, they have different opinions.
And that's why you have judges, right? I mean, we all see the Supreme Court. A judge will read a statute. Clarence Thomas will read a statute. He has a totally different opinion of what that statute means than uh Ruth Bader Ginsburg did before she died, right? These are judges reading the same thing. So uh, that's why it's helpful to have a person who has a lot more knowledge with us than Joe or I or anybody up here does, who can give you a better understanding. Maybe he will say, look, no, you don't have to form a fire district. Whatever the the Agency of Natural Resources told Seth and Joe, they're wrong. The whole town could, if they wanted to, get together. Maybe that's what they'll tell you. But, you know, as Suzanne said, she got a different information from the Secretary of State. And she said, well, maybe the Agent of Natural Resources is over that. It's just like, we talked to the state. We have one department, Phyllis, one day with this whole drinking water thing. We have one department, Phyllis. You had to have a drinking water system. You can't do anything. And they said another, people said, no, that's ridiculous. So it's, we're doing the best we can with the limited amount of time and resources we have to do things. Uh, that's what we're trying to give you guys. The end of the day, all we're trying to do is give you guys the best information we can give you so you can make an informed decision about what you want to do. That's all we're trying to do.
And that was the, that's what the intent of having the letter going out so that everybody understood. And then we would have the meeting on the fifteenth with the expert and all the questions could be asked.
After.
Believe me.
I think the the only piece of the puzzle business in this is there is a stark binary decision, go, no go on whether that does not seem to be true.
Yeah, and I.
And it doesn't seem to have any foundation. But Don, who researches everything, I trust. He says, you don't form a district, the project doesn't go. Yeah, four million dollars at stake.
Ten million.
We really do need to know the answer to that.
We, I agree. I agree.
And I don't see how Steve and Kuda can answer that question in a way.
Because he can, because that's what he does. That's what he does. He, that's what he does. He works with these towns to form fire districts. I mean, that's what his practice, he does municipal law and he does, I mean, he does some other shit too, but his main practice is municipal law.
I'm wondering if we could, I'm wondering if we can have a copy. This letter, I think uh Wendy made an excellent point. This letter is by your own admission containing content that really we don't understand.
And people don't read. People don't read, no. They won't, not even so ahead.
Well, it's, it's that was the, we need, it's that we need all the details and we don't have the details until we meet with this other person. That's it. Lawyer, whatever you want to call him. That's right. The expert on that. That's exactly.
That's exactly what we were trying to do.
That's exactly right.
Why don't we just set up that meeting that Kurt just described and not have this?
That's okay.
From this letter, especially during the Christmas Eve, then just.
That works.
I know.
That's fine. And it's probably a better way to do it, is that way you can ask this guy the questions and he can give you answers. Okay, so maybe you guys, the best answer is we can give you what we've been told.
So could we have a motion that we will not send the letter out and we will have a meeting on the fifteenth of January with Steve and Kuda prior to the select board meeting and public meeting?
And he has confirmed.
Yeah, he's confirmed that.
I'll move. I, I make that wish.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
No, I think it's been enough.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.